Go ahead and call the meeting order. I've got a little something to talk to you all about before we get started, if I may. As you know, we're trying to get all these interviews done prior to the end of the year and perhaps the job offer and all before the end of the year. We've got one date on December 19th. In fairness, a lot of people have not responded also. I'm responding to the people who've contacted. We've got one date that's December 19th is working, okay? So that works for everybody. But I have two dates, 12/12 and 12/15, that 10 of 11 people can be there. And it's going to be my recommendation that we move forward and get these interviews done because otherwise we'll have to do interims, which we can do. But I'd like to, our goal is to get it done in December. And so I'm going to suggest we go ahead and move forward to the best of our ability. But we'll have a large number there, but if one person can't make it, I'm sorry. All right. Okay.
What two days are you recommending?
Your votes are all your own.
Huh?
Which one are we doing, the 12th or 15th?
I'm going to flip a coin.
Let me choose the 12th.
Hmm? Okay, I'll flip it right now. This is heads, this is tails. Heads will be the 12th, 15th will be tails. It's heads, it's the 12th. So that means John Moss can attend and Shannon Kane can attend on the 15th.
I can't be on the 15th, yes.
Okay, so we'll have the 12th, okay? All right, done. If someone could...
I will relay that to Ms. Hilliard and we'll move forward with the invitations for the interviews.
12th and 19th is what it looks like. Okay.
Government decision-making at its best. Fantastic.
Well, at least it's a decision, right?
It is.
Fast decisions.
Okay, we'll now go to the Central District, Central Beach District Stormwater Project, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir. And Tony Alger is our project manager, our lead engineer for all of stormwater flood control now. And she is the one that you saw on your quarterly update.
Tony, you're an important person, is all I can tell you.
And she will be your point of contact and our subject matter expert. And she'll be back on the 12th of December for your quarterly update on flood control as required by you all at the budget.
Tony, we're glad to have you.
Hey. Thank you, Mayor, members of City Council. I'm happy to be here. Today I'm going to go over the Central Resort District Drainage Improvement Project. I passed out, you will notice a table at your, in front of you that I passed out that wasn't included in the original handout. This is just, this was from the last quarterly briefing. It's a reminder that this is the only flood control project, major flood control project that was not funded in the CIP. And you can see from that table the, all of the flood control projects that were funded. So my, my goal today is to review the purpose and need of this project and to make you understand what the flooding problem is, the impacts, and the solutions that we've come with, come up with to mitigate that flooding. So one of the big purpose and need aspects of this project is, in the ongoing sea level rise and recurrent flooding study, there are six areas in the city that have been identified as high-risk areas for sea level rise. And as you can imagine, the Resort District is one of those six areas. Now, these numbers don't mean anything as far as ranking, it's just numbering those areas. So the Central Resort area is the gateway to the oceanfront. It is bounded by Atlantic Avenue to the east, it's bounded by the Virginia Beach Convention Center to the west. It's contained within Watersheds 30 and 29 and is adjacent to Watershed 8. Zooming in on that Central Resort area, the drainage area contains approximately 305 acres and is comprised of four distinct subwatersheds. The Northwest Dome Subwatershed, which is approximately 132 acres, the Southeast Dome Subwatershed, which is approximately 40 acres, the Virginia Beach Convention Center Subwatershed, which is approximately 90 acres, and the Second Precinct Subwatershed, which is approximately 43 acres. Now, the Virginia Beach Convention Center Subwatershed drains north through two box culverts under the interstate. It goes into a tidally influenced channel at the Museum of Contemporary Art, which goes out into Little Neck Creek and eventually to Lankorn Bay. The Northwest Dome Subwatershed, the Second Precinct, and part of the Southeast Dome Subwatershed also drain north through a 60-inch culvert under the interstate into another tidally influenced channel at Moca, into Little Neck Creek, and eventually to Lankorn Bay. The rest of the Southeast Dome, which is approximately 23 acres, drains south to Lake Holly. So to talk about the flooding problem in the Central Resort District, this area experienced a significant flooding due to inadequate drainage systems, low-lying areas, flat terrain, large runoff volumes from impervious areas. And this is because, as you know, the district is completely built out, or just about completely built out. And as I just mentioned, the outfalls are tidally influenced. In addition, just like Windsor Woods, Princess Anne Plaza and the lakes, the stormwater system is old. It was constructed in the 1960s, and it was incrementally constructed. Because it is old, the system does not conform to today's standards for water quality and water quantity. And as you have heard, sea level has risen. It's risen about a foot in the last 50 years, expected to rise another foot and a half in the next 50 years. And due to the tidal influences at the outfalls, these higher coastal water levels diminish the stormwater system's performance. And as I presented to you in the Windsor Woods presentation, the frequency and severity of storms are increasing. So this is a map of the FEMA flood map for the, for this area. The areas in blue represent the 100-year flood, that's elevation 7. The areas in pink represent the 500-year flood. I'm going to zoom in into the Central Resort District. And as you can see, most of the east-west arterial streets are pink in the 500-year flood. Now, something important to note about this is that the areas that are shown in pink today could be the blue areas tomorrow. So a picture is worth 1,000 words. This is the flattest, or I should say the lowest area in the Central Resort District. This is the intersection of 21st Street and Baltic. This area experienced, experiences flooding quite often. This could be from a typical severe summer thunderstorm.
I think I highlight there, there's no hurricane or anything causing that flooding.
Right. Now, these next ones, these next few pictures are, this one is the, from the, what we call the Norida Storm in November of 2009. This was a 30-hour rain event. It was a rain and a wind event. There were 10 inches of rain that fell with six stacking high tides, and tides were running about three feet above normal. This picture was taken at Arctic Avenue and 29th Street. This is the same storm after the wind, after the rain had stopped. This picture's on 28th Street looking west, that's Harris Teeter in the background. And this is another one from that 2009 storm. This is on 30th Street. This is the pedestrian walkway adjacent to 30th Street. And these next few pictures are from Hurricane Sandy, which hit in October of 2012. Hurricane Sandy generated tides in Lynnhaven between five and six feet with five stacking high tides. There was approximately seven and a half inches of rainfall in two days. This picture was taken at Arctic Avenue south of 30th Street. Another picture at Baltic Avenue south of 30th Street.
There's a beautiful picture right there.
There you go. And just to give you a reference, Harris Teeter is on the left in this picture.
Kind of washed out looking.
I thought you liked that one.
They were up there for dirty.
This is 26th Street and Cypress Avenue. And finally, this is that same pedestrian walkway that I showed you in the Norida Storm, and this is taken from the gazebo looking back. So I could continue to show you pictures, but I'm trying to point out here is that this area is vulnerable to coastal storms. There have been many storms since 1998. There's been nine significant storms since 1998. So now I want to talk about the, you know, the impacts that flooding has on the Central Resort District. The entire project is included in the Resort SGA. This is the largest SGA with the greatest deal of proposed redevelopment. The Virginia Beach Resort Area Strategic Action Plan, it was adopted in December of 2008, envisions this area to be a pedestrian and bicycle-friendly, multifamily, medium-density, I'm quoting this, residential, commercial, mixed-use community with a major entertainment district. So this area is going to see major changes in land use. It's also very important for economic development. The city has made a large investment in this area with projects like the Laskin Gateway, the Vibe District, and 19th Street Quarter Improvements. So let's talk about the solutions. In 2013, a master drainage plan for the Central Resort Area was developed. The objectives of that plan were to evaluate the adequacy of the existing drainage system, develop alternatives to collect and convey the stormwater, and develop a phased approach of the recommended alternatives. Now, there were six alternatives that were developed from that study. Two alternatives were not considered feasible, and the remaining four alternatives were further evaluated, and they were presented to City Council in June of 2015. And then we further evaluated those four alternatives, and we determined that we needed to include the Beach Garden Park drainage area in the project. Now, the Beach Garden Park Drainage Area is approximately 390 acres. You can see it in blue up there on the slide. And this area experiences flooding, as you just saw in those pictures. And as I discussed previously, most of the stormwater from Central Resort flows north through this area to Lankorn Bay, so it made sense to include it in our project. The next thing that occurred was we chose the ocean outfall as the preferred ultimate solution for the flooding in this area. This project is approximately $113 million. The other two alternatives that we looked at involved outballing directly to Lankorn Bay, which would cause downstream flooding. And Lankorn Bay is already, has limited capacity, so we discarded those alternatives. And finally, interim projects were identified to improve drainage in areas while funding for the ultimate solution becomes available. So this is the concept design for the ultimate solution. The full comprehensive stormwater management project includes a large pump station at Beach Garden Park. Yes, I can use your... That's located here. Includes the ocean outfall, which is here. It includes a tidal backflow preventer here at Laskin Road to keep the water from Little Neck Creek and Lankorn Bay from backflowing into Beach Garden Park Pond. It includes channel improvements along here. It includes replacing these three box culverts, 24th Street, Old Virginia Beach Road, and this is at Parks Avenue. And it includes improving, or adding all of the storm drainage in this area. And it also includes redirecting 25 acres of drainage area from this area over here in blue to the 16th Street Pump Station. So I'm going to talk about the interim projects that were identified with our study. Right now, we have the analysis underway to evaluate a potential stormwater management pond at the visitor center. We should have that complete by the end of the month, next week we should have that. The first project that was identified was to redirect approximately 25 acres of drainage flow area from the intersection of 21st Street and Baltic Avenue to 16th Street Pump Station. And this is estimated to cost $15 million. And I, this is a clip from the previous slide. This project will alleviate the flooding that occurs at the intersection as well as provide additional storm drain protection to the dome site area. And then for $6 million, we can replace the 42-inch pipe that's under 24th Street with a large box culvert or bridge. This pipe is a bottleneck that causes stormwater to back up upstream in the system. So if we increase the size of the, of the box culvert at 24th Street, we can alleviate some of that upstream flooding. This is a picture of that pipe at 24th Street. So in severe rainfall events, it actually overtops the road here at 24th Street. So in summary, the Central Resort District Drainage Improvement Project was the only major flood control project that did not receive funding in the CIP. The resort area has been identified as being extremely vulnerable to sea level rise. The city has made major investment in this area. Interim projects can be designed and constructed to improve drainage that are compatible with the ultimate solution. And finally, our recommendation is to use the $5.3 million and begin design on Phase 1, which would be redirecting that stormwater from, the stormwater flow from 21st Street and Baltic Avenue to the 16th Street Pump Station, and replace the 42-inch pipe located under 24th Street.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Questions or comments? Bobby D.
Yeah, thank you. Let me just say, I think this project is a priority by all means. But I think one of the things we've got to do, and I think I'm going to express a concern about deviating the $5 million, you know, from FEMA. That was earmarked, I think, for, you know, other projects that really had a high demand in the city. And, you know, I'm just worried about, you know, what the public will think about taking money that was earmarked for a certain, that, you know, we had some serious problems in the city that were very, very acute. And the other thing is too, and I think when we look at the oceanfront, I think we have to take a better look at the whole picture because we're talking about fieldhouses, we're talking about dome site development, we're talking about a potential pier. You know, taking a look at the thing, you know, how are we going to address parking and everything else? So I really think that we have to take a, you know, step back and take a comprehensive look at this. And, you know, but right now, you know, this is just my focus group of one. I'm reluctant to deviate the money right now when we do have some pressing needs.
Barbara Hilli.
Well, I, I think this is a pressing need. And I was really concerned when we didn't include this in the budget this year. Because, and I think I've been asking that question, hey, where, what happened to this one? We're planning all of this development in that area, and I'm assuming that maybe it was the intent or the knowledge that this reimbursement was coming along and that it would, it would go here. But every storm is different, and we can't just say these are the needs because in this particular storm, that's what flooded. Every storm comes in in a different fashion, depending on which way the storm comes in, which way the winds are blowing. So which part of the city floods is going to depend on each storm. And we have a lot of storms. And I think the first time we saw this particular project with this massive cost was maybe a year or two before the one that we keep referring to, Matthew.
2015.
And it was maybe a summer storm that hit and flooded this area so intensely. And everybody said, what in the world happened down there? And then we got these reports about how this particular area is, is vulnerable. So this had been identified extensively from, I think, that storm. And so I was very concerned when it didn't receive any funding. And, and I think it's important that we, just because maybe the, the wind didn't come in particularly the way it, it did the other time last year, doesn't mean this area is not susceptible. And we've got some major neighborhoods in here that have flooded other times and just didn't flood so much with Matthew. So I don't think we can use one storm as being the benchmark for what we're going to, to try to, to work with, particularly when we have the history that we have and all over the city. So I think that when we're looking at these, these flood control projects, we have to look citywide. And I'm, I'm thinking that we really need to emphasize these meetings that are being held in December and January around the city. All of the basins are being covered at a different meeting during that time by the consultants that we have. I think it's extremely important that we emphasize to everybody all over the city, and we don't lull everybody who maybe didn't flood in Matthew into thinking that, you know, they're not a potential place. It just depends on which way the next storm comes in. So I think we have to keep in mind that it's, it's citywide and, and make sure we don't just look at one storm and, and think that that's where the problems all are, the places that had the problems at that particular time.
Shannon, then Jim, then Rosemary.
I, I think I reserve my comments for when we're out there, when we're actually voting on this and talking about it. So, thank you.
Okay. Jim?
Thanks. I would point out, and I understand where Bob is going on this, but, but I would point out that there's people who live here, just like there's people that live in the other, other areas. And I would point to the north end flooding projects. And Mayor, you've mentioned several times growing up there and how if it was just cloudy, there was two feet of water in the street. And I remember that when I was a kid. You couldn't drive down Atlantic Avenue after, after a rainstorm. And we went through a lot of aggravation to get these pump stations, the last one being 60th Street.
A lot of years.
With a lot of opposition from people who, who wanted flood control but didn't want the pump stations in their, in their, on their streets or in their area. But I tell you, you go up there now and, and it doesn't flood. And it, it works, it works very well. And, and you know, we, we've got to really take a look at flooding as, like Barbara said, as a, as a global problem, not just this particular set of events like Matthew is going to cause this area to flood, whereas this particular set of events is going to cause Shore Drive to flood, and this is going to cause, because there's reasons for everything. And, and we really have to take, take that approach to it. So I, I agree with this. I understand, you know, that politically, you know, people are hesitant to do this, but there's people that live here, there's people that are affected by this. And, and I think it's, it's probably, you know, a good use for it.
Rosemary.
I thought the editorial in today's paper was, was pretty telling. And it, I started reading this, I was thinking, oh my goodness, they're going to really bash us for trying to direct this money down to the resort area. Because of all of the, what we've been through with Matthew and, and the perception of that we haven't done enough fast enough. But then when it got to the very end, it, it stated that we've got to go through the processes. Things have got to be built in a layer of the, the planning and one put in place with another, and it all has to work together.
Correct.
And because of the timing, it can't just be done faster, is what a lot of us would like to have seen it being done. So I, I thought it was a, it was a real well-thought-out editorial because it really said what I think a lot of people were thinking. But at the end of the day, it realized that this was probably a good way to go.
John?
I have consistently said that extreme weather events are the biggest existential threat to the city of Virginia Beach. And you only have to look to other places to see what the consequences are. And we are underinvesting in that area. And we had an opportunity a year ago to be more aggressive, and we didn't. But I'm going to save my comments like Ms. Kane for the, out there with the public who's interested with regards to the process that got us to here. Two weeks ago, I posed, posed on October 25th, and asked for an extensive analysis, for comparative analysis of how we chose these projects over all others, to get the comparison so that we aren't just looking at one event or one place, or where we're planning to invest a lot of money and therefore we think it should be favored for investment. I was looking for that truly objective analysis that said, why is this area above all areas the next best added value for 5.3 million? And if it is, it is. But we don't have that body of analysis. If you got in your packet, I didn't get it. And I didn't get it to my questions on October 25th.
Didn't I, didn't I see something from the staff saying this was the number one project? Or am I mistaken?
Saying something's number one and explaining why it's number one is not the same thing.
But I did see that, though.
Yeah. That's mean, that's a number. I could say this is number five. But why is it number five?
Well, I would hope we'd have educated people making those recommendations, which I think we do.
But then they should be able to share the basis of that education to good. I don't make business decisions where I work like that. Someone has to show me. No one showed me. Just like the Missouri State. Show me.
Shannon?
I do have a question. We've, we've talked about the 100-year storm, the 500, the 1,000-year storms. And you showed pictures from Sandy. What, what was that storm? Was it a 100-year, 500? What, do you know, Tom? Or is anybody there?
We'll, we'll get that information to you. But the one thing that is coming out of our sea water rise study is the 100-year storm today, which is based on NOAA statistics that ended in the year 2000, is not the 100-year storm of the future. In fact, just to recalculate the last 15 years and look at what's going to happen the next 25 years, Matthew drops down from a 500-year storm to perhaps a 200-year storm. So Public Works is already, 50 years ago, a designer of a subdivision would plan on six inches of rain in a 24-hour period. Today, it's nine inches. The future, it's going to be 12 inches. But we can find out what Sandy was under the statistics that NOAA has published since 2000. But they really, I don't think they have the budget for revising those statistics in the future at this point. We're doing it for Virginia Beach, though.
You don't have to do a lot of work. I was just curious if anyone knew it off the top of their head.
Wait just a minute, please. Barbara Hilli has another thing.
I was going to answer, Ms. Kane. I recall that Sandy was below a 50-year, and it was, we talked about it somewhere, 25 to 35-year storm. And, and that was the impact that you saw right there.
The southern part of the city got the heaviest rainfall in Sandy. We got...
You got a different storm. Yes, ma'am.
And it's different in different parts of the city, depending on where it comes in. Thinking about the series of meetings that's going to be held in December and January around the city, I, I think we got that scheduled in last week's packet, and I didn't pick it up to bring it today. Can you just mention how those, those meetings are going to be conducted and what they're going to cover? Because I think it's really important for all of us to make sure we emphasize to our constituents the importance of getting to those meetings.
There's two parts of our education program. One is, we are making presentations to special interest groups, civic leagues, business, the Chamber of Commerce, any of the community and business interest groups that want us to come in. And we get, we will be giving presentations similar to what you got from the Dewberry Study and showing the results and what's going on. In the seven meetings that are scheduled for December and January that you're talking about, those are targeted, the city is divided into seven areas, and they're targeted for those areas. And we'll have, these meetings are about two hours long. The first 40 minutes or so will be a presentation on the Dewberry Study, showing some of the results. And then there will be breakout sessions where Old Dominion and the Miles Agency will be conducting exercises with the people to discuss the adaptation strategies, those things that involve physical changes that would solve these problems, to other strategies that might involve environmental passive strategies. So the whole range of strategies. And running exercises to get input from them to find out what is acceptable to the public. What do they think should be? Will they support higher fees? Will they support structural improvements? Will they support abandonment of some low areas? Will they support changes in building codes that might cause houses to be higher? Will they, would they support situations where if their house was protected, but they, would they tolerate occasional street flooding on a, say, annual basis? So that's what those seven meetings are aimed at doing, along with the fact that we have, I think, identified about 50 special interest groups that are eligible for just individual presentations by staff and our consultants.
Other questions or comments?
Just one comment?
Please.
Just let's start, Mr. Hans, the Congressional Budget Office, you know, because flood control's up for reauthorization, it expires here, I believe, this month, if I remember correctly. They did a very comprehensive review of all flood programs of all executive agencies from HUD to agriculture to interior. It's a good piece of compendium research that probably the staff would want to take advantage of and may find that, some of that useful when a meeting with the public. But it's a very, very good job about what's out there from the federal government and what's looked to be changed with the Reauthorization Act.
Other questions or comments before we move on to the next thing? Tony, thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate it. Well, now we got to our next thing, which is the city cybersecurity update.
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of council, Peter Wallace, our CIO, is coming in, and they're going to tee up his briefing. Tom, why don't you jump on that and bring it up? And as Peter comes in, we've got a two-part briefing here. We're going to do an open se- And as Peter comes in, we've got a two-part briefing here, we're going to do an open session part, and then we'll discuss a few particulars in executive session due to confidentiality of the subject. And, Peter, thanks for being here.
Be very glad to have you for your presentation.
Thank you, thank you, members of council, city manager, staff, appreciate giving me the opportunity here while Ernie get this thing going. What's going to start? So, where are we? We're going to talk today about the, as you know, this cybersecurity is a huge thing right now in the world of cybersecurity, where things are changing so fast that we need to stay on top of this thing. So we're going to talk about our view of the world, and obviously the professional view of the world as well, and show you how that impacted the city of Virginia Beach. So we're going to start out with all these various magazines and stuff that we have, and the crime analysis, but I want to start out with a really good video to show kind of set the pace of what we are talking about today. And Ernie, if you can pull it up and let it play out there, and give us a good perspective for where we are.
Cyber criminals rarely fit the Hollywood stereotype, guys in disused warehouses only targeting governments and big banks. The reality is that they're mostly opportunistic, using scattergun techniques like phishing and exploiting avoidable weaknesses, and their intent is rarely for domination. It's usually just to get their hands on anything they can turn into money, and your data will do nicely. But don't underestimate them. Cyber criminals are continuously upping their game, they're sharing information and refining their tactics. Are you? Do you review your defenses to make sure they're aligned with the dangers you're most likely to encounter? Or are you content doing what you've been doing and hoping it never happens to you? The Verizon data breach investigations report is an unparalleled look at the threat landscape. Unlike other reports, it's not based on a survey, it's built on analysis of real breaches, 1,935 of them. But it's not just about the numbers, the DBIR provides in-depth analysis too, including looking at the different mix of threats each industry faces. Protecting your organization and being ready to respond are all about preparation. Step one is knowing what you're up against. This is where you should start.
You can, all right, they have to be once, right just once, we have to always be right. So therefore, we take security very seriously. So the next few slides, we're going to give you what's been going on in the world. Some shocking, very shocking trends between 2017 and 2016. The Ukraine power grid was attacked, I don't know if you recall that, that really put some people out of business, they're in the dark for a long time. And in 2016, we had activism that included WikiLeaks releasing 20,000 emails, hundreds and thousands of pages of information flooded our gateway, stony pictures, that was hacked, remember, all the fallout from all of that. So all of those things are critical to what we're trying to prevent. One of the biggest ones is ransomware. Ransomware spiked 300% in 2016. That was really becoming a norm, unfortunately, of today's world. And it's costing billions in dollars if you have to pay that ransom. Yahoo was attacked, if you remember, 500 million accounts was compromised, so if you have a Yahoo account, make sure that's the real one, okay? Because that was definitely compromised and wasn't used for a long time. The next slide here, we're going to talk about a DDoS. Now, this is denial of services. This is where someone target your site, to be specific, so that you cannot do anything else. You're inundated with so much traffic, you cannot respond. This is a very common practice, and if we look at this website, which also provide real-time monitoring, and this is what's going on in the world right now, this is a very scary depiction of, and it takes a while to spawn up, but this site monitor is all network traffic that are suspected hacks, okay? So therefore, it goes out there, and at some point it will start spinning up. And you can see real-time what is going on from the various countries, and who are the primary players. Typically, you'll see China up there as one of the primary culprit, North Korea, a lot of these things come from all over. So these are real-time happening right now to show the activities that's going on. And as it stays up there, it gets bigger and fuller, and now if you ask, why can't these people help us stop these attacks? Well, all they do is monitoring, it's like police profiling, if you will. Until you get down to investigate, you don't know for sure, but these are very suspicious activities every second of the minute right now, as you can see in real-time.
What would Microsoft Corporation be the attacker for? How does that work?
Microsoft is, on this side, is probably the one who are trying to infiltrate their traffic. Because they try to go after the big guys as well, you know, because you're a known player, so they're going to try to make you know that we can get to you. All right, so we can kill that video, and we're going to go back to the slideshow. And we're going to talk about spamming. And this chart here depicts unwanted email is what spam is, just like you have your junk mail at home, this is the same thing that spam does. This is also increasing, 300% through 2016. And that's a worldwide view, this is not the city, fortunately, but this is a worldwide view, and spam accounts now for 65% of all email traffic. So you can see where you're really monitoring stuff that's not impacting city operations by doing that. This is also email traffic, with ransomware increased by 200%. This, again, is a worldwide stuff that is, and ransomware, by the way, is someone trying to trick you into using to get your, obtain your security passwords, log on, things like that, credit cards. So you've got to be very careful of that. That's an increase that's going on there, and it's become a primary attack method for these cyber crimes. While the crime, the taxes going up, the dollars is even increasing more and more. As you can see between those two graphs there, over the years, you can see where the attacks are going up, but the dollar amount is also getting larger. And that's because they're specifically targeting people that they want to get to, like the targets, the banks that you never hear that got hacked, okay? Because that's something that you want to be, have published. So all these things are taking place each and every day behind the scenes, and those are the numbers that we gather from the FBI and other statistics. Now, what keep us up at night? Many, many things, but cybersecurity is one of those. And the reason for that is you hear this beautiful thing called Internet of Things. That means everything that we have, have a sensor, it captures data. Your cell phone, your smart TV, anything that's considered smart. The problem with that is, they leave a trail of open portals where you actually could get hacked and don't even know it. Someone, if they have a security camera in your house, they could actually compromise a camera and watch you, instead of you watching them. So my takeaway from this is, always change your default gateway password. Whatever device you buy, make sure you change that. Because of the brand, because of the model, people know your password, okay? So you want to make sure that you take time doing that. So the telnet is how they get in, and China uses very aggressively to capture your information. So just want to make sure that's out there. Let's look at the city of Virginia Beach, and this is our data at this point. The red, of course, is spam emails, and it's in millions. So the city averaged about 1.4 million pieces of email per month. So we're a very busy city. But the spam has grown to about 8 million messages per month. So you can see where that chart depicts that. And the spam, by the way, you don't see this in your inbox, thank God. You think you have some emails now, like you have too much emails, imagine if you have all this rest of the stuff. This has been filtered behind the scenes, so it doesn't get to your mailbox. We try to give you only valid email addresses. So a lot of these works are taking place behind the scene. So we're going to talk now about the attempted attacks on the city. Of course, you can see in the legend, there are infected emails, the Trojan, the viruses, and the phishing. This greatest threat from is from infected emails. People still click on emails, that's how they normally penetrate the system, and that still goes on today. So there's 384 phishing attacks against the city last year. Of those, but that could also mean 1,000 phishing emails are tried. Only that amount really people saw and captured or clicked on it once. These attacks are stopped by our antivirus systems, by the way, which we already have installed, and detection that we have, and also the phishing awareness program that we have, which I'm going to talk in a little while about that. So again, these are being stopped behind the scenes before they get to us. So how do we mitigate and train and have an awareness program? This is the pillows that we have. Now, in this process here, people, humans, will always be the weakest link. We can secure ourselves, we can secure our outside, but we need access. So if you are a trusted user in your account, we trust you. However, if you do something like click on an email, that's a compromise. So that's how, pretty much, this main program is all about, and we'll give you some stats from that. In 2015, we started a phishing expedition, and phishing is exactly what it sounds like. We're going to go out there, and we sent about, sent all these emails out, and about 80% of the people were actually very good, didn't click on any emails, as you can see, only 12% actually clicked. So we did that, revamped the study, and put it again in 2017, matter of fact, earlier this year, we just did that. And you can see where we went from 12% to 4%. Even better, 8% reported the issue. From 2015, no one reported any issues. That's a bad thing. That means awareness was not there. 2017, 8%, that means they didn't click at all, right? So you can see where the program is actually getting traction and getting better as we go along. The goal is to get that to zero, by the way. Although, because of standard, industrial standard is about 20% of people click, so we're way below that, but we still want to go even lower. We also, part of our knowledge program, have this training where, it's common trends here, you can see where they use hyperlinks that if you hover over it, does not indicate the true sender of that email. You also have email that may come to you that may say, Tom, you know, who's not really Lee, so it shows up as Tom L., and somebody says, you know, it's not you, don't do that. Email from people that you don't know and give you a hyperlink, please don't click it. So these are kind of what we sent out, and we have cardboard made up, and we give this to the users, and that's how they know this is suspicious, and that's why they report from those other actions that we have, they report this kind of option to us. So I'm going to give you some best practices as well that we have done. So we have this technology called VBloc, which is a Dell EMC infrastructure. It ensures our data rest at ease and transported. So if you send an email from here to someone else, it's all encrypted, okay? We have to do that, we do that very well, I think. And the same thing that receiving, it goes through a firewall, it gets filtered, just like the email server, but this one here is an enterprise. So we cover everyone on the system this way. And the next thing is, as you may know, we have our next-generation network, which has 126 linear miles of fiber in the city. All the nodes are also covered in the same, in the same process. We have encrypted using military-style grade encryption. Okay, so you know, we don't play around here when it comes to the city with this stuff. So our backbone, we have separate management network that, what I'm saying by network management is, if I'm, let's say, an administrator for the system, when you log on, those rights doesn't go with you somewhere else. Because now you can leave your computer unlocked, and somebody come behind you and enter it. So we also have policies to address that. The next thing here is insurance. So it's a common trend now to, for cities or corporations to buy insurance, in case you are breached. Now, we are self-insured here in the city, so having a third-party insurance would actually also help us if for some reason we ever get hacked, we have the resources we can call upon to say, hey, could you help us with this? This happens a lot in the corporate world, it's becoming more common also within governments to have this insurance. So that's the kind of stuff that we're going to be looking at. For a $5,000 policy, it costs about $8,000 a year. So that's not exactly a bad thing to do. And the next one here is, how do we secure the human? We have a program that we're going to contact with SANS, that's the National Security Awareness Training, and we're going to continue to roll it out. It will give us a variety of online training videos, user action, how much they have done, what they have taken, their pass rate, things like that, and that will help us also lower our click rate as well. So I believe for that, we have any questions that we want to talk about?
Thank you very much for your presentation, John.
Are you going to transition at the end user, this is of the desktop, to both biometric plus a PIN plus a card? Which is the new gold standard for TouchPoint, are we migrating to that?
We take it in phases. Everything is secured in the device, the end device, like you just mentioned. So those end devices have to have the ability to also talk to the end service, so as it does, you know, we're going to be doing that now. This also is going to become your login as well at some point. So that's where we're going.
Card point, yeah.
Well, we have to test.
It's okay, I'm just asking for the picture. Are we encrypting text on city mobile devices, phones, are we encrypting text?
Okay, so when it comes to cell phones, they're not necessarily Verizon, and you Sprint, or AT&amp;T, and all those people, naturally, it goes through their, your network, not ours.
Have we looked that down the road on certain parts of that, to go to VPN, so that we can have that encryption on certain systems?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Thank you so much for your presentation. Look forward to the rest of it. City council comments? Do we have any city council comments? Yes, sir.
Last week, we were accelerated, I wanted to mention, I did meet, along with Cecil Cutchins and Hugh Turney, both who are builders, you know, and operate office complexes, we met with the city architects over the new building to look at the standards, which I thought was pretty good. Two things, three things, I think, what you decided on. One, we need to do that same kind of review at 30% of design, because some granularity you can't see yet. We were good to see that the excess space was taken out, I think that was a smart move in light of what the trend line is for less office space over time. I'm not so certain that the council chambers and those things, we might be over-designing for where technology goes in terms of space, but the two big things that we saw is, there's two types of space, there's circulation, how you define circulation, that's the movement around where office and tables and stuff chair, and then there's core services. And it appeared to us at the time that that's where you have like stairwells, lavatories, elevators and all that thing, that there was a double counting, both showing in the itemization listing, but also those things would be in the core services, and that the city, and maybe for good reason, but hopefully we should discuss, uses a much higher percentage, both for core services and circulation than is the practice in the private sector. And while that may be necessary in the public accessible areas generally where the council chambers are and things like that, because of the number of people, certainly as you move up on the floors, it's more traditional, like regular office spaces, we need to make sure that we can't, you know, every square foot is $270 plus debt service. So I'm just saying, I did do that, I told you I was going to, I wanted to report back to you what we did, and that's what I found out, and I look forward to, I think we all should participate in that 30%.
City manager reported to me, that was a very good meeting.
It was excellent, I enjoyed it.
Good. Other comments? Okay, let's go to their agenda review, please.
Okay, under ordinances and resolutions, does anybody have any comments on any of them?
Just one second.
I have your abstaining on four.
Yep. And, correct. And I want to pull item five.
I'm sorry?
Item five, under ordinances.
Your abstaining on that?
No, I want it pulled, I don't want, I don't want it on consent. Want that. And B? Just, well, it's the A part, 5A, I should say, thank you.
Okay, so 5B, we can put on consent.
Right. 5A, okay. All right. Under planning, Water Boxes LLC, Lynn Haven.
There's speakers on the left.
I'm sorry?
I think there's speakers on the left.
Wow, I'm surprised, I've gotten a lot of emails and calls.
Item two, Courthouse Area Charity, Princeton, Masonic Lodge, Ms. Enlin?
That was no opposition that I know of, so we can put it only in consent.
as Cardinal Road, Lynn Haven.
Vice Mayor Jones, I'll be abstaining.
As I will, too.
That's good. And if I can go back to item K1, everybody should have at their place, suggested additional condition.
Item.
That's item K1. So it looks like this. And it's, the condition is the addition of a variable width path to allow people to...
It's J1, isn't it?
A K1. Water boxes?
Water boxes.
J1.
J1.
J1. Well, we're looking.
No, it's K.
It's J. It's J1 on mine.
I've got K.
Didn't it have to be redone because there was a...
Well, we got two different agendas, so.
And I thought everybody had the right...
But we're not crazy.
It's water boxes.
You have additional conditions.
Yes, sir. And it's the one that's underlined here, it talks about a walkway. It is an additional condition. And I'll be happy to discuss that.
We had a cyber attack.
That's right.
Okay. Was that with Cavalier Golf and Yacht?
Yeah, that's consent, and I'm not, I'm standing aside.
It's called...
Okay.
When he speaks.
Counsel, I am gonna let the vice mayor read the closed session, because I will be stepping out on two items today. I will be able to come back on the other items, and I will be able to vote publicly for, you know, whom, saying...
Certification.
Huh?
Certification.
Certification. Got it.
Chair will entertain a motion to recess into closed session pursuant to exemption from open meetings allowed by section 2.2, dash 3711A, code of Virginia is amended for the following purposes. Publicly held property. Discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for public purpose or the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to section 2.2, dash 3711A, three, Lynn Haven District, Beach District, and Beach District. Public contract. Discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to section 2.2, dash 3711A, 29, Dome Site. Security briefing. Discussion of plans to protect public safety as it relates to terrorist activity or specific cyber security threats or vulnerabilities, and briefing by staff members, legal counsel, or law enforcement, or emergency service officials concerning actions taken to respond to such matters or related threat to public safety, cybersecurity of the city's information technology systems. Legal matters. Consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to section 2.2, 3711A, seven. City of Virginia Beach versus Hightower VRMC at L. Personnel matters. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to section 2.2, dash 3711A, one. Council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees, candidates for the position of real estate assessor and city clerk. May I have a motion?
Come on.
Second. Clerk, lead the roll.
Mrs. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Davenport?
Aye.
Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mr. Sandler?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Allen?
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.